Good evening, I'd like to bring the March 2007 Planning and Zoning Commissioning Meeting to open. Will you please join me for the pleasurable meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May the minutes show that all commission members are present. And is there any discussion or comments regarding last five minutes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make three corrections in the minutes. Under Page 1, roll call, strike vice and put Chair Osborn on page 1. And on page 3, I would suggest that my name is spelled D-R-O-E-K rather than D-R-O-K. So I'd make that correction.
That's gross.
And then on page 4, under the action, Commissioner Loretano has the motion carried by unanimous vote of 5 to 0 rather than 4 to 0. And with those changes, I would recommend approval of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the public audience that would like to speak to a case this evening, if you would please get a public card which is out front or see the commission secretary. Thank you. Any disclosure of expertise communication?
No.
None at this time. We'll move to the consent agenda for any consideration, action. We do have three items on the consent agenda. Commission action?
By title only.
By title only. Case A 06700001, 207th Avenue and Pecos, general plan amendment. Applicant is Earl Hurley and Legarde on behalf of McCray Holdings. B, case 05200017, Wood Corporate Campus Rezone. The applicant is Rose Property Southwest. And case 06200024, Neighbor Office Building Rezone. The applicant is Mr. Verl Neighbor. These are different commission meetings for continuation. Madam Chair?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bay. On favor?
Aye.
Right, opposed? Let's have it. All righty. Moving on to old business. We shall open the public hearing for case 05200016, New West Business Park. The applicant is Don Bennett and Landkin Development. And the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission and the public. As you can see in the subject heading in the staff reports before you, this is a rezone request made by Don Bennett and Associates from the current zoning designations of a 10-acre property with both agricultural urban and model home subdivision zoning designations to a final PAD of mixed uses, particularly general commercial and light industrial. And so with that, I'll begin by orienting you with the subject property. The map before you is Exhibit A in the attached PAD document that you have attached to the staff report. And like I said, it's a 10-acre property and it's located almost midway between Perryville Road and Citrus Road. Really half mile from either street. And kind of zooming into this property a little bit, this is the next exhibit, Exhibit B, and it shows you an aerial of the property as it currently exists. And I'll just point this out, like I said, the subject property has both the model home or, excuse me, mobile home subdivision, thank you, mobile home subdivision zoning designation as well as the urban agriculture, which is the much smaller 3.3-acre piece furthest to the west, roughly delineated by this dirt road in between. And this area here is the urban agriculture zoning designation. There is a well site on the property. That is an exception to this zoning, rezoning request that is not included with the final PAD before you. And incidentally, this well site is owned by Arizona Water Company. As far as the general plan is concerned, and going out to Exhibit F, although it's not all that clear here, the property sits within the loop, the loop compatible land use area. And basically, if you look at the general plan, the uses allowed within that land use designation include general commercial, light industrial, open space, and it also mentions prison isn't allowed use within this particular general plan designation. And so like I was saying earlier, the applicant is requesting a rezone to a final PAD consisting of a mix of uses. And since this is just an aerial, let me show you some of the underlying zoning that's being proposed here. What the applicant is proposing is general commercial uses at the frontage, particularly the frontage over at McDowell Road. And those would consist of two lots, and one being about 1.4 acres and the other one 1.8 acres. So those would be the general commercial component of this final PAD. And then further south, the applicant is requesting light industrial uses closer to the freeway. If you look at page, I believe page 6, you'll find the land use matrix that the applicant provided. And this basically lists the uses that would be allowed in that property, which is generally consistent with the general commercial and light industrial uses or the hard zone districts that are listed in the zoning ordinance. You'll notice there are a few uses here listed that will require a use permit, review for use permit and approval even after approval of a rezone, of this rezone request. What you'll also notice is the applicant has also included a sign program, and that's located in the back of the PAD document. I'll begin with the multi-tenant sign that's proposed for the frontage of McDowell Road. Basically, it's a 30-foot multi-tenant freestanding sign. It's about 10 feet in height, but the displayer is about 48 square feet. The staff is in support of the sign package that you have before you, not only the freestanding sign, but the wall signage that's also included, including the service area signage as well. However, staff does take exception to the proposed freeway pylon sign or the identification sign that's also included with this package. If you look at the, in Section 4, if you look at the design guidelines for freeway pylon signs, you'll notice that not only is a use permit required, but also there are specific guidelines as to what would warrant such type of signage. In this case, it's a 30-foot identification sign that's being proposed, intended to be visible along the freeway, which actually is included in the definition of a freeway pylon sign. In the design guidelines, it mentions that such signage is recommended for areas that, for properties that are at least 30 acres and have at least 1,000 feet of frontage along the freeway. It also mentions that such signage is intended for businesses of regional influence. So this being a relatively small development at only 10 acres, staff is recommending approval of the final PAD and the sign package, but with exception to this particular proposal. And that's why, as one of the stipulations, particularly the last one, stipulation number 19, staff is recommending that, should the commission decide to recommend approval, that this particular proposal be deleted from the final PAD package. However, should the commission recommend approval, it would need to still go through the process formulated in the zoning ordinance, and that is for the applicant to obtain a use permit, of course, at a later date. So staff is recommending approval of the final PAD package with the exception that I just mentioned. All the other stipulations are really border plate. I should also mention that staff did on February 15th hold a citizen review meeting, and there were eight attendees, all of them, if I remember correctly, were residents of Canada Village. There were some concerns mentioned, such as truck traffic, noise at odd hours of the night. And staff said that, you know, we'll work with the applicant to mitigate some of these concerns, but at the end, there was no opposition expressed by any of the members at this meeting. So with that, I'll conclude my comments and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Gelsner.
On the stipulation 19 on the 30-foot high multi-tenant, has the applicant conceded that stipulation to the, you know? They're aware that stipulation's in there and they're going forward with it, knowing that that 30-foot sign is not going to happen?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gelsner, the staff report was provided to the applicant. In fact, we just confirmed that they have acknowledged that stipulation is in there. And although they disagree, they're fine with the rest of the material in the staff report.
We'll save it for their time.
Any other questions?
Farhad, on page 7, the rear service entrance signs, one of my favorites, I always look for, 2-inch lettering in the back. Is there a reason that we could not have that larger for, because this obviously is for delivery vehicles and things like that that are going to be driving in the back of buildings? 2 inches are very difficult to see from areas.
Madam Chair, frankly, I don't see why not, if it's the intent, just to make it more visible.
Yes, truly.
Three, four?
I would say five, four to five.
Five feet.
Inches, not feet. Big difference there. Yeah.
That's two quotations.
Okay. That was my only comment there.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to speak? Anything you'd like to add or?
We have questions, so come on up.
Oh, come on up.
I'm Don Bennett, 250 North Litchfield Road, Suite 250 in Goodyear.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Gelsner?
On the plan, when we went out and looked at the site today, we saw on the west side there is, you know, mobile home storage and Contratina wire chain link fence up around the mobile home, and we understand that that eventually is going to go away with this new development. However, the Arizona Water Company's well also has Contratina wire and razor wire all around its site. And so I'm looking at your, you know, walls that you're going to put through, you know, around the property, you know, basically to lead into the property. And I guess what I really want to ask you is, I understand that the Arizona Water Well Site is not yours, but you have a vested interest in helping them upgrade that piece of property. And so what are your intentions or how are we going to deal with this?
Well, first of all, you're correct. We don't have any right to do anything with it. However, we're going to do everything we can to put a fence around it, a block fence or some type of a decorative block fence and that type of thing. There is a couple of problems with that property. There's two ownerships, and I think we can work through them. We've talked with them a little bit.
The well has two ownerships?
Yes, it does. It's got two separate ownerships.
Okay.
So, but I think that can be worked out.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll definitely, we will definitely, if we can't work with them on their part, we will go ahead and fence it on our part.
Okay.
On our property.
Yeah, but that's what we, you know, I remember seeing when I was reading through this, you know, your proposal, you talked about putting, you know, having walls around the perimeter walls.
Right.
And I know you're going to be able to put a perimeter wall around, you know, half of it, you know, two sides, the south side and the east side. The question is, what are they going to do on how are they going to fix there?
Right. Well, one way or the other, it'll be done. I assure you.
Well, you know, we want it to look good, and you've done other buildings here, so we know the caliber of your work.
Thank you.
Well, of course, you want it to look good.
I definitely want it to look good. I might also add that the fence on the east part of this property that borders the mini storage and that fence, when I purchased that acreage from those people, that fence also belongs to me.
Okay.
So I will not be putting another fence parallel their fence, it'll be one fence.
You're going to just tie into their fence?
I will tie it directly into their fence.
Great, super. Otherwise, we'd have a little alley of trash.
Yeah, no, 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 no alleys.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Yelken?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no public comment cards, but if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak, now's the time. If not, we will close the public hearing, and I'd like to call for commission action.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend to approve case 06200016, the request to rezone approximately 10 acres of land located along the south side of McDowell Road, approximately one-half mile west of Citrus Road, from agriculture urban and model home subdivision zoning district to the final planned area development district for the New West Business Park.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second before I call the vote. I would like it clarified that within the COAC and whatever you want to call this up here, it's not model homes, it's mobile homes, and that does need to be verified. Correct, Farhad? Okay. With that in mind, we have a motion to second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it. Thank you. Okay, case B 06200019, Amaranth Area 1, Montage 690, final planned area development. The applicant is Joe Porter with Montage Holding LLC. And to open the public hearing and ask for a staff presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the public, staff does not have a formal presentation for these next two cases as they were continued from the previous planning commission meeting. However, staff did want to update the commission on some things that have happened since the last meeting. As the commission may recall, this case was continued in an effort to provide additional notice, particularly to the Pinale County. And notices were sent and copies of the applications, the development applications, were sent to the Pinale County Planning Director. We have had numerous discussions with the Pinale County Planning Director. They have looked at the plans and they have no comments, they have not submitted any comments. We will continue to send them future applications. So wanted to update the commission on that. Also wanted to update the commission on the stipulations that were requested at the previous meeting. There is an error in the staff report. The staff report to the city council will include stipulations to notify the public of the Luthonza Airport, of Waste Management's Butterfield Landfill, of the Union Pacific Railroad, State Route 238, the Loop 303, and the private airstrips that are in the area, so that future homeowners will know that they are buying homes in proximity to those existing uses. So this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions. The applicant is also available to answer questions.
Thank you, Brett. Is there any questions for staff? Yes, Sean?
Brett, and this may be more with the preliminary class, but I'll ask it anyway. The earlier presentation, there was a stipulation regarding the developer was going to provide sprinklers where, and I don't see that this time, has something changed or is this being taken care of by something else other than this?
Madam Chair, Mr. Lox, that specific stipulation referring to is being taken care of in the development agreement.
Any other questions of staff? The applicants like to step up to the podium. Thank you, sir. Was there anything you'd like to add on, any presentation that you wanted to?
No, Madam Chair, person counsel, I think everything's been said. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
If you can answer questions.
Thank you. Questions of the applicants? Okay, well, I guess it's all up to me. I have questions. All right. Probably, let's just start off with kind of a biggie on, what is this? In your booklet, showing the, actually, it's showing the layout of the, darn, I wish I had the page. How about page 10? See this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's showing how the Butterfield Overland Route goes through, and I know that when we originally, in the general plan area, discussed the fact that we did not want that truck route to the landfill through residential property, and there was supposed to be a land swap and all this type of thing, but I'm still seeing this route, and it's going right through a residential area. So let's start with that one. Tell me what's going on there.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, are you talking about page 10?
Well, I don't, it doesn't have a page number. That's why it's, that's why I showed you what the picture looked like, because it doesn't really.
It's the page 29, though.
Page 9?
All right, all right. The, okay, good question. That dashed line is not related to the Butterfield Landfill. It's the Butterfield Overland Route, which was a stage route.
Okay.
And it is actually the ends, it's a national historic trail.
Okay.
And so that has nothing to do with transportation to the landfill.
Okay.
Now, your other question.
Mm-hmm. But, so you're telling me then that the trash truck route, the 300-odd trucks that will be going through there are not cutting through a residential section at this time?
No, no. They'll go down State Route 238 and then follow the road they follow now to the east side of the landfill until that's relocated in the future to the west side of the landfill.
Okay.
And that won't take place until we can get the extension of Rainbow Valley Road constructed and there's access to that side.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I think I kind of asked you this before, and I think I know the answer, but when you look at the townhomes and you look at the mansion multi-tenant type of layout, then you have those very small lots, everything looks like it's two to three stories. As you graduate out in density, will you have more single-story homes or will they be more clustering so they're not just the straight line of homes that looks like a huge wall?
Absolutely, Madam Chairperson. We'll have single-family houses. In fact, Garth, when this was all together, said, "Where are the single-family homes?" We've been so focused on showing how two-story higher-density houses and work that we actually didn't pay attention to the one-story houses, but there'll be the same mix in most of the neighborhoods that there are anyplace.
Okay. Just every single picture you see is a, it's a story. Okay. Going down the line, the train tracks and the proximity to the homes. I'm an Arizona native that has never dealt with trains except for through the TV and movies, and so of course I envision these little homes shaking across the, you know, and I just, because I have no clue. And the fact that I see that you have a decent open space trying to be as a buffer, but then I also see that highway expansion could come upon that, I guess I'm a little concerned about what kind of sound attenuation or is there, is there any, actually, I did ask our little railroad expert over here about, do you have vibration, do you have tremors when these, I don't know how often the train goes through town every day, I don't know.
Let me tell you what we're doing to address that.
Okay.
The first time Garth and I looked at the property, you recognize that State Highway 238 goes through it, there's a Union Pacific Railroad line that has one track now, it's planned for two tracks and ultimately three tracks. So there's a transportation corridor that bisects the community, and that was a given from the beginning. And, and our preconception at the time was that we'd do everything possible to screen that and make that a through-traffic corridor so it had minimum impact on the community. And if you remember, when we made our citizen comments to the general plan amendment that Elliot Holmes had started, they had some places where the road kind of bent through and went through the commercial areas in the community, and we straightened all of that out. Our landscape architects are now working on the berm for the first phase, and we've retained an acoustical engineer, a sound consultant, who's a professor at ASU, and he's doing a series of studies to identify, first of all, what we can do just to mitigate the noise and from both the railroad track and from the state highway, and how high the berms have to be and all of the things that we need to do to reduce the noise. One of the issues, one of the solutions is using rubberized pavement on 238. So we're looking at all of those, and we'll be able to show you noise contours, because we have, you know, we have the issue of traffic going through, but then we have some areas like the First Village Center where we want some glimpses into it. So how do you buffer sound but also allow some glimpses into the Village Center from passing traffic?
Right.
And we're dealing with all of that now in designing the landscaping, the berming and walls to deal with that, and we'll be able to quantify that, those sound issues.
I think that one thing that probably needs to be addressed then, once that study comes through, you've got a school that you've laid out very close to that whole section, and I would think that that needs to be reconsidered.
Yeah, it will be, not only, not only in the design of the berms, but in the sound, in the design of the school.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And right now, in our first phase, I think the closest home's about 450 feet from the railroad track. And we're, so we're on this, it's a very important, that, dealing with that road is extremely important to the quality of the community and to, you know, our ability to have people live there in a quality manner. So we will address that and understand, anything that we do, we will do on, I mean, if it's noisy, it'll be on purpose and we'll, we'll know about it and we'll deal with it.
How many train, how often do they come through then?
Maybe 30 a day. We're having the noise consultant do a study on 100 trains a day.
Okay.
In the Union Pacific's dreams.
Well, yeah, I don't know, but, but the, you know, the air on the, I mean, we'll be able to look at the full range of things with these models, okay?
All right. All right. Just give me, anybody else? Just let me go. Thanks, guys.
We're supporting you?
Yeah.
We're not quite ready.
Ah, okay. If I hear any snoring, I'm throwing the gavel at them. You know, that may actually be, I think that were the main ones. Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I have no public comment cards. Would you like to say something? Okay. Then I shall close the public hearing and call for commission action or discussion. What would you like? Mr. Geller?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of case 07, I'm sorry, 062000019, the Montage 690 Final Planned Area Development with the attached stipulations.
I'll second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We shall move on to case 075000003. Amendment area one, phase one, Montage 690, preliminary plat. Applicant Joe Porter, Montage Holdings. Open the public hearing and ask if Mr. Brett has anything else to say? No? Mr. Porter? Anything else to add?
No.
Thank you. Questions of staff or the applicant? From you? Anyone from the audience? You? Okay. We shall close the public hearing. Ask for commission action.
Madam Chair, Madam Chairwoman, I move that we approve case 07500003, the request for the preliminary plat approval with the set four stipulations.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, new business. Case A 072000003, the Arizona State Land Department, preliminary planned area development. The applicant is the city of Goodyear. We shall open the public hearing. Ms. Williams?
New kid.
New kid.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the public. Moving to a context map, you've all seen this map several times just to help get you oriented with the area. As the commission is aware, on July 10, 2006, Arizona State Land Commissioner Mark Wickelman and the Arizona State Land Department authorized the city of Goodyear to undertake general planning on approximately 5,000 acres of trust lands as part of the overall Sonoran Valley general plan amendment. And the ultimate intent and objective was to develop a pre-annexation development agreement between the state land department and the city of Goodyear, and that was approved on March 5, 2007. And that development agreement includes a provision that the city will provide preliminary PAD zoning entitlement for the trust lands as a condition of annexation. And your packet contains a development unit vicinity map that shows the six different areas that are included in the middle. And as the commission is aware, development unit number six was not included in the annexation and therefore cannot be included in the preliminary PAD, but it is included in these exhibits. Included within the preliminary PAD application is approximately 790 acres that are owned by Montage Holdings. And their property that they own, the approximately 800 acres, is adjacent to development unit number one. For those in the audience, it's, I'm trying to keep still, it's this area right here. Montage Holdings is a co-applicant in this reason application due to their proximity to the state land property. And also, in an effort to provide for more organizing, comprehensive planning, master planning and infrastructure planning for the area, the city did try to get additional landowners to be involved in this We'll now move to the land use plan. The preliminary PAD contains various land use designations, a variety of residential, commercial, industrial, there's public, quasi-public parks, and also open space, land use designations. This is development unit number one, and this next exhibit shows the other development units. The preliminary PAD will adhere to the development standards as defined and designated in future final PADs. And as you'll see in your staff report, there's stipulations included to notify the public of existing land uses. For example, the Luthanza Airport Training Facility, Waste Management's Butterfield Landfill, Union Pacific Railroad, State Route 238, the Loop 303. In conclusion, the requested preliminary PAD meets the intent, objectives, and the general requirements of the PAD district, and also with the land use designations that are in the city's general plan. And staff recommends approvals subject to the stipulations that are in your staff report. This concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mr. Geller?
Brett, on development unit one, there's a gas line that runs along the southwestern edge of it. And isn't there a power line, you know, a 269 KV line going in there? Something, isn't there a power easement? Do we, yes, do we think, do you think we need to have some stipulation in addition to all the other wonderful things that we have notified future landowners of, or homeowners, or business people of, that we should add those two in also?
I would defer that question to our community development director.
Harvey? Sorry, I was, sidebar here. What was the question?
Okay, I mean, in the stipulations, we notify everybody of Luthanza, the State Highway 238, the railroad, Butterfield Landfill, and the private landing strips. We have a gas line that runs along the southwest of developing unit one, along the proposed Rainbow Valley Road, and we also have, isn't there also a electrical easement? And they're going to be building a big power line there? So do you think we ought to add those two infrastructure pieces to the, you know, grand notification of, instead of notifying five, we notify seven items?
Madam Chair, I guess it wouldn't hurt if they, there's a 100, I think it's a thousand-foot corridor for the power.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's about a thousand, I believe it's about a thousand-foot corridor for that, for that power, for that gas. So I don't think it would hurt if they added this.
Well, I'm just, you know, just, development unit one is the one that seems to have the most extensive planning, probably has the, you know, is going to be coming up, and the pipes, you know, the pipe of the power lines are going to run through this one, whereas the other ones is going to run adjacent to them or not.
Okay. Madam Chair, this is a preliminary, this is a preliminary PAD, and despite it wants to stay, occupy the land, we get it developed, we're going to do the final PAD, and kind of focus more on the B side. I guess it wouldn't hurt if they, you know, would change this.
Well, I guess I wouldn't want it to, I guess I would want it in the preliminary because it could, people could forget, or I may not be on the commission, when that actually shows up, you know, six years from now.
Yes, sir.
Sure. My name is Tim Keenan. I'm at 6720 North Scottsdale Road. I represent Montage Holdings. And that line is presently scheduled to be in in about a year. I mean, people are going to see it, but I don't have any problem within our plats representing that there's a, it's a 500 KV A line that'll be there.
Okay. Okay. I'm just saying, you know, we have four other infrastructure things there. I think we should, I don't, I don't need-
No, I've got, I've got six things on the plat already.
Yeah.
I don't think adding one more is going to hurt, so.
Well, two. You got a gas line there, too.
Okay.
There's a, there's an eight-inch gas line that runs Kidder Morgan's gas line, I think runs through there.
It's actually, I'll pass for natural gas that's in there. And they occupy a 330-foot corridor.
Right.
An SRP would be a 275-foot corridor.
Okay.
Down through that area, so.
Well, if you don't have objections, I don't have objections, and maybe staff could add it to the next thing. That'll be good.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, representative from the state land department also said that that stipulation would be okay.
Okay. Thank you. Here, anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Any other questions of the applicant or staff? Of staff being somewhat of the applicant, I guess. Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. Anyone from the audience like to speak to us? No? We shall close the public hearing. Call for commission action. And everybody jump.
Chair, I move that we approve case 072000003, Arizona State Land Department, preliminary planned area development, and include the additional two stipulations as discussed in the presentation.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Williams? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, applicant, see you at the end. Okay.
And no trust to the state land department.
Yeah.
Sure, free planning provided by the city of Goodyear.
All right. Letter B, case 0663000014, amendment to the sign package for Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two. Applicant is Tricia Rochford, Rochford, Suncor Development Company. Like to open the public hearing. Ask staff presentation. Brett?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the public, I've got an aerial photo exhibit, which, it's a little difficult to see the boundary of the subdivision. I've placed a blue dotted line around the area here. So we are at the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Litchfield Road. You can see to the west of the center is the driving range. To the south is the Palm Valley Office Park. To the east is the apartments, the Palm Valley Luxury Rentals. And the property is behind the Hampton Inn, also the Macaroni Grill, McGrath's, and the credit union, the bank that is there. This comprehensive sign package for the center includes one freestanding monument sign. It includes wall signage, directory signage, building-mounted wall signage, and addressing signage. There are two requests that deviate from the zoning ordinance standards. The first request, the applicant is requesting that these buildings, because they are removed from Litchfield Road, that they might be able to contain additional building wall signage. And the package states that if one user occupies or owns more than 50% of one of the buildings, they may have additional wall signage. 1.5 square feet of sign area for each linear foot of elevation. The applicant has noted that this is consistent with what has been approved in the surrounding area with sign packages adjacent to this development. The second request, the applicant is asking for a freestanding monument sign, you can see on this exhibit showing it as a red bullet with a black dot, adjacent to the Macaroni Grill site. As the commission is aware, several businesses in the center already have freestanding monument signs. The applicant has noted that Washington Federal and the Macaroni Grill purchased their properties from Suncor in 2000 and 2001. And at that time, Suncor reserved a sign easement on the corner of the Macaroni Grill properties so that they would eventually be able to construct a monument sign in that area to benefit the properties that would be located behind the businesses. The requirement of the sign package for businesses, three or more businesses to have a sign package, was not added into the zoning ordinance until the year 2002. Therefore, consistent with the zoning ordinance at the time, some individual monument signs were approved for the area. Now that Suncor is marketing the remainder of the property, they have stated that multi-tenant monument signage is needed. And this sign matches the existing signs that are at Palm Valley Office Park Phases One, Two, and Three. So Suncor is requesting the approval of the sign package for the following reasons. Number one, the requirement for the sign package was not in place. When the first individual freestanding monument signs were approved for this project. Number two, Suncor has noted that if they were required to submit a comprehensive sign package at that time, they would have requested a multi-tenant monument sign at that location in lieu of allowing all those businesses to have their own monument sign. And the third reason, building addressing needs to be visible for the fire department, it needs to be visible to public view. And so, addressing would be appropriate to have on a monument sign adjacent to Litchfield Road. So there may be some need for a monument sign on, adjacent to Litchfield Road. So in consideration for the monument sign, staff recommends that the total amount of wall signage allowed for any business not exceed 200 square feet. And that is outlined in stipulation number two. So staff is saying that we recommend that the monument sign be allowed, but the total signage for the, each respective business be capped at 200 square feet, which is consistent with Arizona ordinance standards. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the comprehensive sign package, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant, Tricia Rochford, with Suncor, is also available if there are any questions. There's a representative in the sign company as well.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Ken Ogden?
Yes, Kate.
Is there going to be a pass-through between the Commerce Park Phase Two and the Office Park, which would allow access to the facility from McDowell
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name's Tricia Rochford with Suncor, 80 East Río Salado Parkway in Tempe, Arizona. There are, if I'm understanding your question, of course, I have not used this before. Brett, you might have to tell me where to point.
Let's switch to Elmo if we do.
Okay, thank you. Here and here on McDowell Road, there are access points. And this driveway comes straight through and goes all the way through the Commerce Park as well, and has that connection. As well as, there is another connection through this location. So there's cross-access completely through all these properties.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Could you tell, I know this is a sign case, but could you tell us what type of buildings you're planning on building? And, you know, what heights and what are we going to, what are we looking at here?
Well-
Or are you selling it off? And then who's, and then what are they planning on building?
Currently, this building is in the city right now. I believe has received site plan approval. And that's a- approval, and that's, um, uh, and, and they come through Suncor for architectural review approval, so they've been through our architectural review. And these two buildings, which probably won't lay out exactly like this, are, we are talking to two developers who are pretty well-known developers here in Goodyear, they have a track record here in Goodyear, so you will know who they are when they come through, I just don't know if I'm at liberty to say who they are quite yet because we haven't opened escrow or, we're just in talks right now, so.
What, the building that's in site plan review at the city, what kind of building is it, how many stories?
It's a two-story office building. Again, this, this building layout isn't, isn't accurate as to, to what they're doing. They're actually, it's two, it's one bill, it's two buildings that have, that really has a connecting courtyard. It's really, it's a, it's a really nice building. I think what they've done with the courtyard, they've created some really nice open spaces through the building, almost like, you know, gathering areas within the building, so, or within that courtyard between the two buildings, so I, I, I think they've done a really good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? No?
I'm, 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 I guess I'm still kind of, I'm vacillating here because the sign package is for the Commerce Park, which is, you know, the, the problem with the Commerce Park for me is that it's not visible at all from any direction, and the only indicator that you have that it exists is a monument sign on Lynchfield Road. And, and unless that's going to be a three, four, five story tower, nobody's going to know, know it's back there. And, and so the only monument sign that you have for that property is in front of Macaroni Grill. And so I guess I'm curious as to whether or not there would be some other indicator of, of the existence of that property, possibly even off of McDowell. Which was my reason for asking, was there some through thoroughfare or, you know, street or something that takes you back there?
And there is, but you, you would have to be in the Office Park, sort of going through there and, and realize that you can, you can connect all the way north.
This would be a different address if it was on McDowell, too, by putting different numbers, you know?
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't really so much speaking in terms of the addressing. I understand the addressing needs to remain on Lynchfield Park, but I guess my concern is, is that it really is, it had, if we're not for egress, ingress through these, between the Hampton Inn and the Macaroni Grill, there would be no other, no other access to it at all.
Right.
So, so I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the orientation and, and how that's all seen. I'm sure there's nothing we can do about it, but it's, it's just, it's bothersome to me because it has no frontage.
Okay.
Which is the reason why we are asking for this multi-tenant sign, so we can at least give some, enough identification from Lynchfield Road, that there is, there are buildings back there, there are businesses, there are-
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
If there are going to be three office buildings, there could be any number from three to twenty-five or more tenants? Is that correct?
Sure, depending on the size of the, of the tenants.
I mean, if there's three or four tenants, I can understand some kind of a sign, but if there's, you know, a bunch of legal offices and telephone call centers or, or whatever, twenty or twenty-five tenants, how can, how can a sign like that do justice to those tenants? Should there maybe just be a sign that identifies each building? Would that be quite so big?
Well, I think, you know, the addresses-
They have a building sign, there's directory signs in front of each building, like here, like those.
Is your point that maybe tenants don't need to be on McDowell Road, it should be just strictly a commerce sign with the address? Is that true?
Unless there are, unless it's restricted to just three or four tenants, but if there's, you know, multiple tenants-
Off square footage users, of course, you're going to, uh-huh.
And that is our intention, that the tenants that would go on the monument sign would be the larger tenants. They wouldn't necessarily be a, you know, twelve thousand square foot, small, you know, office tenant. And it would be more of a tenant where you, you would say, oh, well, we're in the same building as security title, and someone's going to look for that security title on that monument sign.
I do understand your point.
Yeah.
I, I have no questions, mine is more of a comment that I don't like all these signs. I think you have a reason to need the monument sign because you are hidden back there. I'm not happy that we now have the Hampton Inn, Macaroni Grill, McGrath's, and Washington Hill, I mean, you can see they're there, they don't need that monument sign, and so I wish that, that, that wasn't the case, so I hope in the future we don't have this happen again. That's, was my comment. Anything else? Anyone in the public?
Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm just bothered, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so you've reserved an easement, it looks like on the northeast, the southern part of the entryway there, your drawing seems to depict a, a median between the, the ingress, egress, ingress?
Yes, there is a median there. Between the two directions of traffic.
Oh, never mind, that would be a horrible idea. Forget my thought.
Okay, all right. I'll just relax.
I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm comfortable with this, that's all.
All right.
Okay.
I shall close the public hearing, ask for committee action, commission action.
Madam Chairman, I recommend that we, I move that we recommend case zero six, six three zero, 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 one, four, the amendment to the sign package for the Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two, with the required stipulations.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All righty, staff? Any communications?
Madam Chair, we have a, a special meeting on April fourth, just the one item, the revised rezoning for Wood Corporate Campus to accommodate the baseball spring training facility and Ballpark Village, so that's the only item we have. So I guess I'll take the opportunity to extend a congratulations to the Madam Chair, who was, as apparent, the results haven't been certified, they'll be cert, hopefully certified Monday, that Chairperson Osborne has been elected to the city council.
Yay, congratulations.
Possibly her last meeting, so, so we'll stay tuned.
All right, thank you.
Other, other than that, I'm available to answer any questions.
So, so, so so far we have an April fourth, and then-
The regular meeting, I think.
Regular.
And then committee, we have accepted applications for replacement for our commission member, and we formed a subcommittee, and we're reviewing those applications this week, and hopefully we'll have someone recommended a council pretty soon, have a replacement. As well as-
There's no replacement for me. Oh, I just want to-
We'll try to replace you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We shall, anybody else? That's it? All right.